Seven o'clock. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Council President Bernard.
Here.
District One Morsette.
Here.
District Two Yaku.
Here.
District Four Wyland.
Here.
District Five Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six Vanslow.
Here.
We're at the point in our agenda where we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to speak to that's not on the agenda tonight, this is your opportunity. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Andrea Jorgensen from the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I'm here tonight to welcome the community and surrounding area of Hudson to the Christmas Tour of Homes and Crafts Sale. It's coming up the weekend of November 18th through the 20th. The event will kick off with our dazzle tour, which will be held Friday night, where our community comes out to see the homes as they sparkle and shine. There are five homes on the tour as usual, including also the historic Octagon House. We also, on Saturday and Sunday, will be having the traditional tour, which includes those homes as well, and also an arts and crafts sale up at the Best Western Hotel. I'd like to invite everybody to come out as well for the black tie event. The deadline for tickets to purchase those are this November 10th. It's a special evening and a special night. Please call the chamber for more information. And I'd also like to let the community know that we're getting ready to celebrate the holidays here in Hudson with many events coming up, including our annual Night Up Light and Reindeer in the Park, to name a few. So please come on out. We invite you to join us in downtown Hudson and surrounding areas.
Thank you. Sounds great. Anyone else who'd like to speak to an item not on the agenda? All right, with that, if we could hear the consent agenda items, please.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of October 18th, 2011. To approve the certified survey map proposed by Mr. Bill Cornwall, creating one one-family residential lot and one outlot for the property at 327 Seventh Street South. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $823,418.12. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of one regular operator's license for the period November 8th, 2011 to June 30th, 2013, to Timothy L. Johnson, 1706 Fairway Drive, Hudson, Wisconsin. To authorize legal counsel to work with city staff on an ordinance to create a stormwater utility.
Could you pull that one, please?
To prove imposing a $5 cash deposit plus court costs and surcharges for a total of $57.30 for parking violations to Chapter 235-55B as recommended by the municipal Judge Garrity. To place on file the quarterly reports of the city clerk and the library director, the semi-annual report of the community development director, and the October 25th, 2011 minutes, meeting minutes of the community access board, and the October 18th, 2011 minutes of the St. Cora EMS Commission. And that is all.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved. Moving to the first item in the agenda, addresses ordinance number 20-11. This is the issue for which we had our public hearing. It's a request to rezone 1.25 acres of the southwest quadrant of Crestview Drive and Hagan Street from public to multiple-family residential district. Denny, would you like to speak to this, please?
The parcel is currently owned by the City of Hudson. It's an outlot that basically has steep slopes and trees. The city set it aside to preserve the trees and slopes on it. The proposed development, which will be discussed later tonight, for the 40-unit community-based residential facility called Comforts of Home, is proposing to buy the lot just immediately to the east of that site and develop the residential facility. The Plan Commission reviewed this issue, recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to medium-density residential and zoning to RM1 multiple-family residential. Ordinance 20-11 places that in consideration. You have an opportunity or have first reading tonight or suspend the rules and consider adoption.
I'll move to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. I'm sorry. Keep your comment.
We're going to talk about the details of the development plan in a moment, but can you at least speak before we vote on this about the stipulations that were put into the development plan about the trees and slopes?
Yeah, the city, we do have a signed purchase agreement with Goldridge Group in regards to this parcel. There are restrictive covenants that have been placed on the sale of the property and ownership of the property, that trees cannot be removed and slopes greater than 12% cannot be graded on. The purpose of purchasing this property by Goldridge is to provide green space for their development, but also give them additional latitude for placement of facility on their property that they're purchasing from Mr. Steve Kinney, and it gives them a little more latitude where they can place it, also allows them to provide a little more additional off-street parking on the parcel. So there are restricted covenants on this, which essentially keeps it in the same condition as the city ownership.
Thank you.
So let's vote on the motion to suspend the rules. We can take further questions, comments. All in favor of suspending the rules, vote aye. Roll call vote. Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Okay. Now, are there any further questions or comments on ordinance 20-11?
Move to approve ordinance 20-11.
Second. We have a motion and a second. There are no other comments or questions. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Denny, and the next item is the final development plans for Comfort of Homes Senior Living, 40-unit community-based residential facility at that southwest quadrant of Hagan Street and Crestview Drive. This has also gone through Plan Commission. I'll let you speak to it further, please.
The Plan Commission recommendation recommends approval of the final development plans for the 40-unit community-based residential facility proposed by the Goldridge Group. The project is entitled Comforts of Home of Hudson. This project will be essentially a twin of the existing Comforts of Home facility located on Hagan Street and immediately south of the proposed location. This is a 40-unit facility. The existing facility is 42 units. Again, they will have to have licensing through the state of Wisconsin for a community-based residential facility. This development will have two accesses off of Hagan Street, one immediately across from the south customer entrance to the post office, then the second would be a little bit further south, across from the post office employee entrance. Again, meets the requirements. The city is selling the parcel immediately to the west to accommodate green space and some latitude as far as placement of the building. Project architect, Jamie Bulli, is here tonight, also the manager of Comforts Home, is here tonight to answer any questions if you have questions of them. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval.
Well, I'll move to approve the Comfort, Plan Commission's recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Denny or anyone else regarding the project? If not, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Denny. Jumping down to item number four under Finance, application of Fiesta Loca LLC for the Reserve Class B liquor license. They're located at 121 Carmichael Road, Unit 106. We all received information from Nancy regarding some of the additional alcoholic beverage licenses that are available due to the recent census. There are two Class B liquor and Class B beer combination licenses available. That is what Fiesta Loca has applied for, and if they were to be granted that license, they would relinquish their Class B beer and their Class B wine licenses, so those would become available. We had discussion at Finance, and there was some desire, it was a 2-1 vote, there was some desire on the part of the committee to wait a little bit and see what other applications come in. Nancy's had other inquiries regarding these licenses, and so there was the recommendation from Finance is that we hold off for a brief time and see what other interests there may be in the licenses.
How long have you had them published for, what, a week now or two weeks?
It was published one week, but that was a couple of weeks ago.
I have a question. You mentioned in Finance that there was a number of packets, a few other packets that went out last week, right? Is there a holding period when, once you get them back, before they can come to council?
They have to be on file 15 days in the Clerk's office before they can come to council.
Okay, so, okay, so even, they weren't able to, they wouldn't have been able to come to council tonight if they were ready.
I suggested waiting until the second meeting and/or the only meeting in December. I mean, they can open up with a B and a C right now, beer and wine, so.
And I tend to agree with you, especially if there's a holding period, if there's more interest, and they just, by the way the law is, they can't, we can't bring it to council quite yet. I think we're kind of jumping the gun. I don't think it's going to hurt anything to wait a couple of weeks to see what other interests are. We don't know what the businesses are that pulled, so.
Just to be clear there, do they have a Class B and C?
They can open up with beer and wine right now.
Okay.
Sir, would you like to step forward?
My name is Herman Duran, and the address is 131 Carmichael Road, Unit 106, and I want to thank everybody for the wine and liquor, I mean, wine and beer license, but I want you guys to know that we really need, I mean, it'll help our business to be more successful, the liquor license, just because we are a Mexican restaurant, and, I mean, margaritas is a big thing with, in a Mexican restaurant. I mean, thank you, everybody.
Thanks very much. One moment. You all noticed on your issue sheet, there's information from the municipal code 145-11B, and it talks about some of the criteria that we are to use when issuing these licenses, including the number of employees and creation of new jobs proposed by the applicant, the possible expansion of the tax base, adequacy of parking. There's a number of factors that we should consider. We're not obligated to issue, even though there's one available, we're not obligated to issue it tonight or really at any point. We're free to take the applications as they come and address each one on its merit. Comment?
My name is Lon Faya. I'm the landlord at the building, 131 Carmichael, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Herman and Jill, Herman was the agent of record, is that what they call it, the agent of record, at La Fiesta Mexicana for the last five years. They have operated a Mexican restaurant in town here with zero police calls, well, I shouldn't say zero, I don't know of any. It's been a successful operation. They ran a very quality establishment in terms of problems that developed with the use of alcohol or police calls to the building. It was a successful operation. They're now branching out on their own, but this is not their first rodeo. This is a couple who have run a successful business here in town for five years. They've now followed the rules. They've put in an application. If others haven't applied, it seems punitive to me to stop them from running a successful business because some applications might be forthcoming. Now, there are many factors, as Ms. Bernard was saying, parking. We have ample parking, especially for the evening supper and evening business. There is very little sit-down business restaurants on that side of town, off of Carmichael. We're going to employ, how many employees in the, will be at the restaurant?
I think about 10.
Okay. 10 to 15 employees. Is it an Applebee's? No. But these are hard-working folks who have proved their resourcefulness and proved their integrity in running an establishment as the registered agent of, holding that type of liquor license already in town. I would ask that you respectfully, strongly consider them now rather than waiting, because margaritas in a Mexican restaurant, yes, they could open with the beer and wine, but there's a license available. There are two. Did I understand that there are two? If you want to hold one for, I don't want to say that, if you want to wait and see if there's another applicant that's coming, I see that you still have one to wait, but you've got people with experience who are running a valid business in a part of town that needs it. They followed all the rules. They're here. They've done the applications. They're investing all of the money they have into this restaurant. They know what they're doing. They've run one for five years. They've already run it successfully without problems. I'm asking that you look seriously at their application for a full liquor license.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask, Nancy, typically in the past when we've put out, put it out, given people a chance to respond, did we follow a process any differently this time? Or have we given people the same amount of time to respond as we have previously?
It's the same as in the past.
Thank you.
And I think what's unique now is that we suddenly have these, this number of licenses available, which has not been the case in the past. So it's somewhat unique in that regard.
It is because it's due to a population change this time rather than council changing the quota and number system.
Right.
But we went through the same advertising process?
Yes.
Did all the applicants have the same amount of time, Nancy, to apply for this as Fiesta Loca?
Yes. There is a waiting period after the publication is in the newspaper, as well as a 15-day waiting period for when we get an application on file. So there's two 15-day waiting periods, but they can overlap.
Have you received applications back or are there just packets out?
Packets have been given out, but no other applications have been received for this type of a license.
It is kind of funny having a Mexican restaurant without margaritas. I can't disagree with that statement.
I think that we followed the process and that we should discuss it on its merits and vote on it.
Yeah, I agree with that. We've got people here who have followed all of the rules and regulations, who've got a business they want to open, and I don't know that we should be restrictive of their potential success by holding back a liquor license when everyone had the same amount of opportunity to apply for it. I don't, I don't know.
Is that a motion that I'm hearing?
Yeah, I don't know why I hold back when everybody had the same opportunity. If there was some reason other people didn't have the same opportunity, I feel differently. But everybody had the same opportunity, and these people were first, and I don't know why they shouldn't be getting the license.
Is that a motion?
I understand we want to look at the tax base. I understand we want to look at the tax base. We want to look at the number of employees they're going to have. We want to look at the amount of revenue and generate it and all that, but I think in this case, to be fair to these people, they deserve the license.
Is that a motion?
So I'll make a motion to grant the license to La Fiesta.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
It does seem punitive to hold back at this point, especially when we have one more, so I tend to totally, or I totally agree with the fact that Mexican without margaritas just seems, it's un-Mexican, you know? So, anyway. I second.
And I do need to remind you that it would need to be contingent on successful billing and fire inspections.
Now, at Finance, you mentioned that, it was mentioned that licenses not extend out to the patio, which I understand, no one's going to be out there until the summer, so if they need to expand out, if this were to get approved and they need to expand to the patio, they would just come in for an amendment. It's not, okay, it's not anything that would hold anything up.
Right. They just put something in writing and then we bring it back to council for approval.
And they'll surrender the beer and wine before you issue?
That all depends on when they're ready to open.
Because you've got a kind of like, it would be combo license quota system?
We haven't issued anything yet.
Right. That's what he was asking.
Right. Whatever is approved when they're ready to open is what we would issue.
When are you planning on opening? Do you know yet?
Sign was installed today. Drywall's done. Bathrooms are coming in there within a week of opening.
And how many, how much seating will be in there, will be available?
It'll be right around 60 on the interior, somewhere in there, and then obviously the patio is sort of, you have to be pretty brave.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Nancy or business owner? All right, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Luck on your new business. Down to item number six, compliance with governmental accounting standards, Board Requirements Resolution Number 21-11. This is brought forward by Neil Saltis. And I'm not an accountant, so I'm not going to even try and.
The Governmental Accounting Standard Board promulgates rules for how we report to the public, and there are, they are mandating this change for all fiscal years beginning after July 1, 2010. So this would cover our reporting for the calendar year 2011. Essentially what this, it really is, it will only probably appear on the financial statements, and the change that they're making currently, if you look at your fund balance on the financial statement, there are two classifications, reserved and unreserved. The change that's being mandated is that they're going to five classifications based upon the level of restrictions. The five classifications are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And what the resolution does is establishes, basically designates certain funds as being restricted, and then for the assigned, which is essentially part of unreserved now, it would allow the city administrator to make that classification.
Okay.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second. Second, roll call vote. Morsette?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Move adoption, Resolution Number 21-11.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Thank you, Neil. You can stay up there, because the issue on stormwater utility and authorizing us to move forward with legal counsel to discuss the formation of a stormwater utility was pulled. Lee, any particular?
Yep, I just wanted to, this is kind of our first go at talking about this in public, really, and I thought that we could have just a short briefing of what it is that we need to accomplish and then pass it on to legal. I don't have a problem with that, but I thought it would be a good opportunity to explain what's happening.
Sure, and I'm going to let Neil do that, since he's been doing a lot of the background work with Tom.
One of the things we're looking at is, there are really two factors here. Number one, in stormwater utility, we're trying to become a little bit more proactive in terms of our efforts. I think, as you saw last year and again this year, we've had to dip into the contingency fund for emergency repairs to the stormwater. In order to be proactive, the other factor in here is that since the city is now, as of the 2010 census, over 10,000 people, we are going to shortly be required to get a, really, a discharge permit from the Department of Natural Resources for our stormwater. And as conditioned to get that discharge permit, there are additional maintenance and education efforts that we need to, we're going to need to undertake. So this is one method of funding those additional activities. When we look at stormwater, there is a fair amount of deferred maintenance, and, you know, potentially, Tom Zulley can comment on some of the things that the additional funds would be used for. I think significant in there, though, is, you know, one of, I've talked to Tom about the budget. We've met with the staff in River Falls, because River Falls had to comply with this 10 years ago, and they started their stormwater utility about, I think, eight years ago. But some of, you know, probably one of the initial tasks is really try to inspect every stormwater catchbase, every stormwater inlet, and every manhole in the city to determine what the condition is, to try to, you know, anticipate where repairs may be needed in the future. In other areas of concerns, we may be televising some of the sections, so that we're, you know, so that we're getting ahead of the game instead of responding to crises.
I got, there's two points I want to bring out. By having to go to the stormwater, this issue of hitting 10,000 people, I understand we now have to treat, or will have to treat, the water that comes out of our stormwaters. Today, it flows, but it doesn't get treated. There's some settling basins, but from what I understand, there's a lot of infrastructure development to do over the next few years. Is that correct, Tom?
Wait, I understand that.
Yeah, and so this is a way of starting to look at how do we fund what we're going to be required to do by the state. And as you pointed out, we've had a lot of flooding problems downtown, we've had flooding problems in different areas here, and this is another way of looking at that stormwater and saying, how do we fix some of these pretty serious problems we have? So that's why I just wanted to bring that out and make sure everybody understood what was going on.
Great. So at this point, we are just authorizing Neil to work with Catherine in the development of the stormwater utility, and we should be hearing from them sometime very soon, before the end of the year. So at this point, we're just authorizing Catherine to get involved. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize legal counsel to work with staff on an ordinance to create the stormwater utility.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Update on the budget. Devin, got packets out to everyone?
You should have all either already picked them up or they're on the table this evening. If you have questions on it, if you could let me know prior to the next meeting, public hearing, so that I can research and answer whatever questions you have. We have all but one of the taxing entity levies in, so as soon as I get the last one in, Neil and I get in from the county, there are some sheets in there that have estimates. We'll try to get the final numbers in there to you somehow before the next meeting, or it'll be on the table at the next meeting. The public hearing, I believe, is at 6:50 prior to the next meeting on the budget.
Okay. Great. Any questions from anyone on the budget at this point?
Not yet.
Okay, if not, Dennis, would you like to come up and give us an update on projects, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief. For the most part, the projects that the city had going on, as public city projects have wrapped up. The Mill and Overly project is completed. Grandview Park Storm Sewer Project has also been completed. That one is a little more obscure, back in the woods, north of the park. The lakefront bathhouse pathway improvements have also been completed, as well as White Camp Park pathways, so. I think the lakefront park had some field, some site conditions, a lot of debris was uncovered when the contractor was doing the work. It's from the nature of the location, a lot of old building footings and bricks and poles. And White Camp Park had some additional, a little bit of storm sewer added, so there might be a few additional costs with both projects, but we'll, we can see what that looks like when the contractor submits his pay request. Other than that, the urban forestry inventory is done or almost done. We've gotten a lot of data from the arborist that we'll be putting into the software program, and so that's in the process. And the Vine Street feasibility report, we've, you may have noticed, we've been some utilities marked, so we're taking that data and incorporating that into the report. There is a few, a fair amount of utilities in that corridor, sizable gas main on the north side of the road and a sizable AT&amp;T ducts, two of them on the south side, so that may impact recommended improvements, but we're factoring that in. And from private developments, there isn't a whole lot of activity, so I won't comment on it unless someone has some questions.
Any questions for Dennis?
Thanks.
Thanks, Dennis. I think there's been some excellent Mill and Overly work done this summer. Cooley stands out. I think the work that's been done down at Second and Vine to smooth that out has turned out very well, so it's been a good summer in that regard. Okay, moving on to new business. Okay, moving on to new business, amend municipal code, Chapter 242-10C with regard to the water cross-connection controls. There is an ordinance number 19-11. I don't see Tim here to address it.
I believe the only change is to correct the section number. There was a change at the state level.
It's a housekeeping measure, just to correct the number.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call vote. Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt.
Second. It's a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 19-11, amend in Section 242 of the municipal code. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That gets us through our agenda. Are there communications from any alderperson or items for future agendas you'd like to see? City attorney? City administrator? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.